We're back. Yeah, baby. Education Committee. There's actually some fun stuff that happened last night during the Education Committee meeting. Was it education? No, it wasn't education. It was Ways and Means. And they were talking about our school property taxes and this guy Brandon Brown, who's the CEO of Mind Trust. We have talked about him in the past, whenever we have the Education Committee. Um, I think he might have been there like a, maybe a month or two ago. But anyway, he totally mocked Ed Delaney, which Ed Delaney, uh, I know you guys don't watch any of these State House Committee meetings, but the guy will always ask a question, especially when it has to do with charter schools. And when it has to do with any, any of like the top five things that Democrats or Republicans do not get along with. You know, the trans stuff, the gay stuff, uh, the charter school, uh, property taxes sometimes. Uh, definitely the gun stuff. Uh, but it was pretty entertaining. I'm gonna put, I'm gonna put it right now. Okay, so that was fun, right? It's kind of fun. So we're, the other night, there was the Education Committee and apparently Jeff Butts was gonna be here. I'm hoping that he'll be here and if the, for those who don't know, I will be posting it here as soon as they get done in introducing themselves of how much Jeff Butts made, uh, last year.
Good evening, everyone. Um, tonight is the fourth, March 4th.
March 4th.
We're moving into March, guys.
Yeah, it's pretty crazy, right? Time flies. But anyway, Jeff Butts made... He made three hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars last year. So whenever people want to complain that our teachers aren't getting paid enough, we don't have enough, insert here for the school, uh, just remember your superintendents are making close to three hundred or over three hundred thousand dollars a year. And that doesn't even include stipends, health insurance, pensions, what have you. Alright, but let's get into it.
Uh, we're here in the Public Assembly Room of the City County Building and it is 5:30. We're here for the Education Committee for the Indianapolis City County Council.
Awesome.
And we have one presentation tonight. And there will be no voting. There will be no public testimony. Before we get started, I want to allow my colleagues on the Education Committee to introduce themselves in the communities that they represent, starting with my bottom left.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Brian Mallory, District 25.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Josh Bain, District 21.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Derek Cahill, District 23.
Thank you, Chairman Jessica McCormick, District 16, which our presenters are in.
Uh, Fiona McCormick looks like Sindel from, uh, but like a fat version of Sindel from Mortal Kombat. You know who I'm talking about? Alright, okay, so hold on, let's back up a minute. Uh, where is it? Okay, so there's, there's Jessica McCormick and there's Sindel. If I could, that's like Asian Sindel though. I want the white version of her. Uh, that one? Uh, that one? Oh, there we go. That's a good one. Right there. Okay. Boom. Gotta be kidding me. You gotta be kidding me! I don't even know where it went. Alright. Right there, Jessica McCormick, but, but a fat version of her. Fat version of... Yeah, there we go, right there. That's fat, fat Sindel right there.
Jessica McCormick, District 16, which our presenters are in. Ben Davis and Wayne Township.
COO with, there's not any room to cut their budget.
Oh, what the hell?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Dr. Carlos Perkins, District 6, uh, Washington and Pike Township.
Awesome. My name is Keith Graves. I represent-
Oh, uh, Doctor of Ministry.
Council District 9, which is the east side of Indianapolis, the northeast corridor. Uh, good evening, everyone. Uh, I want to begin tonight with a few prepared words. Um, first up is what I thought was a sobering truth. Uh, according to a 2022 study, nearly seventy percent of incarcerated individuals in the United States read below a fourth grade level.
Ah. Okay.
This isn't just a statistic.
Okay.
It's a reflection of the direct link between literacy and opportunity.
Oh, hmm.
When children struggle to-
So Keith Graves is trying to connect the dots. You know, if these people just knew how to read, they would not be raping women. Hey, ABC's before the raping, everybody. This is, this is your, uh, your Education Committee Chair, Keith Graves, saying, eh, you know what, if these people just read, was able to read Winnie the Pooh, maybe they wouldn't have murdered their wife. They wouldn't have drowned their children.
They struggle to learn. When they struggle to learn, they struggle to graduate.
Oh, hmm.
And when they struggle to graduate, they struggle to find success-
Oh, okay.
-beyond the classroom.
Okay.
The path forward for our young people begins with literacy.
Hmm.
And if we want to build a stronger, more prosperous Indianapolis, we must ensure that every child has the foundational skills they need to thrive. That is why I've made it my mission in partnership with my colleagues on this committee to ensure that every student in Indianapolis reaches grade level reading proficiency by 2030. We have five years, guys. But we want to make this goal a reality and we must be intentional about identifying what works and then scaling it across our city. Tonight, we have the privilege of hearing from a leader who has dedicated his life to ensuring his students succeed. Dr. Jeff Butts, Superintendent of Wayne Township Schools. Under his leadership since 2011, Wayne Township Schools has made significant strides in student achievement and in 2019, he was named Indiana's Superintendent of the Year. His commitment to academic excellence coupled with his ability to forge strong partnerships between schools, families, and communities has helped create an environment where students can succeed both in and beyond the classroom.
I'm assuming like you're struggling there, buddy.
Dr. Butts is no stranger to the full spectrum of education. He's been a teacher, a coach, and even a bus driver, as he and I spoke about. Uh, seeing firsthand every piece of what it takes to run a successful school district, from transportation to administration. Uh, he's a national educational leader, uh, who serves on multiple boards advocating for student success. His insight tonight will be invaluable as our committee continues the information gathering phase to better understand what is working in Wayne Township and what lessons we can apply across Indianapolis.
Embarrassing.
As we welcome Dr. Butts tonight, I ask each of you, my colleagues and the general community, to reflect on what kind of education you once wanted for your own children. Now ask yourself, why shouldn't every child in Indianapolis have that same opportunity?
They do, but they do!
In the literacy, leadership, and development today, we cannot expect a stronger, more prosperous city tomorrow.
Good God.
Dr. Butts, thank you so much for joining us.
I like how they always say, hey, you know, the government needs to do more. Never, hey, maybe the parents should start doing their job. I'm just saying.
This evening, we look forward to learning from you. The floor is yours.
Chairman Graves, thank you very much. And committee, we appreciate the opportunity to be before you. Your words are far too kind and we are blessed on the west side of Indianapolis to have great support. Uh, and no one individual is successful without a great team. And I have a great team with me today. Uh, all but one will be presenting and speaking, uh, as to the aspects that they directly are responsible for. I'd like to introduce them first, so you know who, uh, I've brought with me today. I'll start over to my far left, Steve Samuel, Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Operations. Heather Pierce, Dr. Heather Pierce, Assistant Superintendent for Elementary. Janine Templeman, she is not speaking. She's our Chief Communications Officer, but is responsible for putting all of our materials together. She likes to be behind the camera, not in front of it. Dr. Shanice Suggs, our Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources. Dr. Elizabeth Walters, our Assistant Superintendent for Secondary Education. Dr. Danita Harris, our Assistant Superintendent for Exceptional Learners. And Dr. Tony Harvey, our Chief Technology Officer. You've teed the-
How much do you think in salaries you had right there? Maybe two million dollars? Remember, Jeff Butts makes over three hundred thousand dollars a year. They're probably all making two hundred, a hundred and fifty, two hundred thousand dollars. So what, two, eight? Ten, twelve? Fourteen, sixteen? Yeah, I'd say about two million dollars, easily. Two million dollars sitting right there in the front row. Uh, while the kids can't, uh, read or do basic math. Hey, but you know what? According to Keith Graves, if, uh, these rapists were able to, uh, read, they would not be raping women. Who knew, huh?
This presentation up extremely well and we hope to do it the justice that you have, uh, introduced it as. We're fortunate on the west side of Indianapolis to work with three of our City County Councilors. Uh, Councilors Carlino, McCormick, and Evans, all are, uh, we're fortunate to, to be supported by and to work closely with, depending on which part of our, our school district we are directly, uh, in.
Uh, let's see. A homewrecking bitch, a guy who lives with his parents, a forty-year-old who lives with his parents, and Fiona McCormick? Yeah, great. West side, am I right, boys?
You'll notice, uh, our tagline, "We Are Wayne," that actually did not begin until 2011. Of course, we can't take full credit for that. Uh, Marshall University may have coined that phrase a, a long time ago. My brother is a graduate of the Thundering Herd. Uh, but we sat down with our students in 2010 and said, "What should our community reflect?" Student voice is critically important for us and it's something that we engage often as we are looking at the future of our school district, the future of those opportunities. By the look around this room and me included, it's been a minute since I've been in, in high school. I remember what high school was like for me. I don't know what high school is like for my students if I don't ask them. And they were a critical voice as we talk about some of the things that, that we are doing today. We are fortunate, Mr. Bellamy, we are fortunate to have just under twenty-three hundred staff members who work with our children each and every day. Our enrollment is down, fifteen thousand, eight hundred and ten. We were close to seventeen thousand prior to the pandemic and so we did see a drop.
Oh, look at that. Uh, two thou-, oh, that's really interesting. Before the lockdowns, encouraged by Democrats, you had seventeen thousand students. Now, four years later, you have fifteen thousand. And seventy percent of that are students of color. Who would've guessed? And multilingual students plus six thousand. Holy crap. That is an unbelievable amount. So like almost a third of almost, uh, are basically don't speak English. Ninety countries? Really?
Significantly to homeschooling. Uh, it's an area that, uh, we, where we've seen the greatest loss of our students. We currently represent ninety countries and have eighty-three languages spoke, uh, in the MSD of Wayne Township. It's the most we've ever had. It's the most diverse population we ever have and Dr. Harris is gonna speak to that here in just a minute.
You wonder why, uh, Wayne Township is failing. You have, you have like fucking click clock and all these people from different countries that don't even know how to use the bathroom properly.
Twenty-two schools and programs, six thousand of our children are considered multilingual students. Seventy-one percent of our children are children of color. And, Mr. Bellamy, we are blessed to have the amazing leadership of a school board that is really comes from a variety of backgrounds. President Bowman is, uh, Vice President of a local company. Susan Graves, our Vice President, is a retired teacher. Karen Burke has grandchildren in our school district. Her husband works for Pike Township. Ramika Graham is a principal in Pike Township. Mike Nance, uh, also retired, uh, financial industry executive. Sherry O'Day-Markat, actually a retired administrator from the MSD of Wayne Township. And Ben Wakefield is a pastor in the MSD of Wayne Township with children in our school district. They are, uh, actually our, Sherry O'Day-Markat is in her first year or her first term. Both Karen Burke and Susan Graves are in their second term. And we have a long history of consistent leadership in the MSD of Wayne Township. In fact, uh, we have one of the longest, or actually the longest-serving board member in Indiana's history, Phyllis Lewis, served fifty-two and a half years before she retired from her service. So, and is still very active in our community. The next four slides, uh, have a lot of text on them. They are the absolute worst thing that you ever can do on any PowerPoint presentation, but I wanted to highlight some of the things, and I know you have, uh, an advanced copy and a printed copy there. But what these four slides indicate are some of the work that we've done during the, the years of my superintendency. Increasing our bond, uh, our bond rating that allows us to, to borrow money at a reduced rate. Increasing our cash balance that allows us to have that industry standard of two months' worth of operating, uh, operating funds in case something were to happen. Um, looking at energy management, we're gonna talk a lot about energy management tonight. Looking at fortunately, some, some, uh, partnerships with the city to provide TIF past three dollars as a result of the airport TIF, uh, largest TIF in the area. Uh, and that has gone towards helping our adult education learners to have better opportunities and greater opportunities to have a higher quality of life, to-
Wait a minute. Adult education learner? What is that? Someone help me out with that one.
Maybe get some education that they did not receive during their more traditional years, uh, but now have a desire to do so.
Wait, wait. Why are the taxpayers funding that, though? They're adults. Let them be on their own. The roads are still fucked up, by the way.
On the next slide, you'll see again, our community has been extremely supportive with referendum that, that has been passed. Um, looking at the increased graduation rate, having the opportunity to develop Wayne habits of success. That is coined to Wayne, but you may also know them as employability skills, what sometimes people call soft skills, or now the new terminology, durability skills. They're all those things that our employers keep telling us, this is what we want for our employees to have. We can train them in skills. We can train them in specifics related to our business, but we need for them to show up on time. We need for them to be able to work with, with other individuals. We need for them to have durability and grit and all of those things that are, are listed in the Governor's Workforce Council Durability Skills.
Alright, so you're just wanting to make sure that they're ca-, good, good and sweet little cattle, is what it is. We gotta make sure you're good in the workforce, because we need that tax money.
And we've been fortunate to receive several grants as we have, uh, sought to meet the needs of our students and seeking out additional partners. On our next slide, we highlight several of those grant, those giant partnerships, four hundred different businesses, industries, local entities that partner with us. And we currently have over a thousand individuals every single week that come in and mentor two students in our Host Reading Intervention Program. Uh, so we'll talk a little bit about that as we talk about literacy. We were the first to develop an early college, high school pro-
Eh 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 eh. Mr. Butts, reduce the district dependency on fossil fuels through the purchase of propane-fueled and electric vehicles. How much does that cost the taxpayers, Jeff?
Program at the Career Center. So we have four programs right now where students are earning their high school diploma and their associate degree in a career and technical field. We also, of course, have Ben Davis University High School. It opened up in 2007, most successful early college high school in the state. Actually, I think, I probably could safely say the country, uh, but we have had consistent a hundred percent graduation rate for the last fourteen years and, uh, about ninety-five percent, ninety-three to ninety-five percent of those students will also earn their associate degree actually before they get their high school diploma, because Ben Sands graduates before we do. So they, they actually walk the stage of Ben Sands before they walk the stage in the MSD of Wayne Township. And like all governmental entities and political subdivisions, we've gone through several different cuts. Uh, we're going through one now as we continue to right-size coming out of Esser and as we look towards the future of what's happening right now at State House, uh, with-
Hell yeah.
To shift property tax collections and revenue, distributions between school units. Um, and so we're, we're preparing for that as well.
Eat shit, Butts. Maybe, hey, maybe we should freeze your salary, huh? Three hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars you made last year? Fuck you.
And then in our final slide, this is also extremely important to us. Another way that we are looking at cost-saving measure, measures is helping our employees to be as well as possible. Not only fit physically and, uh, with their health, but also with their finances, with their mental health, um, looking at all aspects of our employees that will help them to be able to-
Establish the culture of pride, integrity, honesty, achievement through the "We Are Wayne" motto. That is so fucking dumb. Read, re-, redevelop the district's website, increase the user's social media to communicate information. Created the Voyager's program to better educate our constituents. Dude, I miss the nineties, alright? God, we used to be so less retarded back then. But now we have like, oh, how's your feelings doing? Hey, you know what? You can't read because, you know, I, you got your feelings hurt. Oh, poor me. Bring back spanking!
To better serve our students and to better serve-
Bring ba-, you know what? Bring back the dunce hat. We need the boo box. We need like the scared closet. We need to bring back shaming. Because this is how we breed competition. Oh, you don't want to be made fun of? Maybe try not being fucking dumb. There's an idea.
Other, we are, um, also reaching out to our community and create, we have a Voyager's program in which we try to empower our, our community members to know more about our district, to pull that curtain back so that we can share that with, with our, uh, our community members and help them to understand what happens within our schools. It's my pleasure to-
I gotta find their operating budget.
Talk a little bit about the learners that we have inside of our classrooms and what our district looks like, uh, from a, a breakdown standpoint of our student body.
Bro.
Good evening, good evening. One of the things we are most proud of in the MSD of Wayne Township is the fact that we get to serve a very diverse student population. So what you have in front of you right now-
Oh, boy.
Is the count for our multilingual learner student population. Sometimes it's called-
Hold up, baby. I gotta go disappear mode, because we want to make sure of these MLS. What the hell is an ML student? Oh, multilingual learner. Oh, fucking acronyms, I hate it. Hold on. There we go. There we go.
English learners or ELL for English language-
Check this out. Eighty spoken languages, including Spanish, Yoruba, Haitian, Creole, Creole. There's two different types of Creole, Haitian Creole and Creole. That's like in Blues Blu-, hold on, hold on. That's like in Brute, Blues Brothers when they're like, what kind of music do you, uh, do you guys do? And they're like, oh, we do both times. Uh, western and country. We have both kinds, Haitian Creole and Creole. We're diverse over here. And, uh, what is this? Tigrania, Tigrina are the top five languages spoken by our EL students. What the fuck is that? Where does that come from? Uh, yeah, but we're in Africa. Is it Tigger with the hard R? Tigrinia? What, is that like a pasta?
Learners. In our district, we refer to them as multilingual learners. With ninety-three countries and-
What are these levels? There's levels of multilingual stu-, is this like how good you're at speaking English? Ugh, so what's level one? Holy shit. Okay, so the level one means that you're fresh off the boat. Uh, so level one, you have thirteen hundred of them. Level two is eight hundred and eighty-one. Level three, is level three like you're pretty decent? Okay, so you're still like basically retarded at, in speaking English and reading it. Sixteen hundred and level four is eight hundred and thirty-seven. So level four, I'm assuming is the highest where you can actually communicate where, uh, you're in, I'm sure the accent is still there, whatever it might be. Language learners are thirty percent of Wayne's total enrollment. That is terrifying. Wayne Township is totally done. It's gonna be a third world country.
Eighty languages spoken and that can change on any given day.
This is fucking terrifying.
Third highest multilingual population in the state of Indiana. The chart that you see here in front of you gives you a breakdown of those students ranging from levels one through levels four. Those are students we directly serve by our ESL teacher population.
And you know, and you know damn well that these, uh, these people are on welfare. There's no way that like you, like level one people, because you know, I'm sure their parents are fresh off the boat too. And, hold on. Can't even see. I thought you gave a carrot, but it's not like these people, the, like, the kids are coming in here. They don't know how to speak Engli-, English, so there's a good chance their parents don't know how to speak English. So how are their parents making any money when they can't even speak the native language? Alright, here we go. Alright, so level one is entering, level two is emerging, level three is developing, level four is expanding, level five is bridging. Okay, so there's not even five and six on here. That means like they've only topped off at level four. Hopefully the next slide will show something, but they get tested out. So what's level five? Besides bridging? Oh, okay. This is terr-
Level one students are those students who come to us speaking no language or, no, I'm sorry, no English or little English. And level four students are those students who are not yet quite at English proficiency. The difference you see there from that number four thousand, seven hundred and sixty-two to that six thousand, six hundred and sixty-six number is the number of total students, levels one through four. And the remaining number of those students are students who have reached level five. That means they have reached a level of proficiency. However, at any given time, they can be reclassified as English learners. So definitely wanted to share that data with you. So we have a total language learner count as thirty-eight percent. Next slide, please.
Oh, 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 I can't wait for this one. Oh, shit, hold on. I might have to disappear for a little bit, boys and girls, uh, because I want to make sure everybody can see these numbers. Hold on. Alright, so we got here. This, this is why I had to pause. What is sped? Special education, fifteen percent. EL is English learners. Thirty-eight percent. What is HA? High ability. So those are the smart people? Okay, there's ten percent. The free and reduced lunch, I'm guessing, is, uh, seventy-one percent. We got the, the island boys, the Pacific Islanders is point two, American Indian is point two-two. Uh, Asians, point seven, multiracial, five point three-four. I don't even know how you figure out that number, but uh, white is twenty-three percent, Hispanic is thirty-three percent, and black African is thirty-seven percent. We have, uh, this is fucking crazy. There was like high ability, are those the people that take the, um, I don't know, like the honors classes, basically? Yeah, yeah, okay. For the, for us nineties babies, that's, those, those are like the honors, is the most part. What's the term for elementary? Oh, so it's like honors, but for elementary school? What, if I had to like compare the two? It's like that, like as an analogy? Like a participation trophy, then? Fuck that means.
I provide you with our district-
Huh? So like if the average IQ is ninety, is ninety, right? If then someone gets a hundred, they're considered high ability? Well, i- if it's like that, though, right? Like if I had to compare? Okay, okay, alright. That's so funny. School is so dumb now. Yeah, okay, an accelerated class. Okay. I'm, I'm getting, I'm getting, I'm getting my, this is why I have the headphones on. This is why I have the special headphones on right now. Because my producer is filling me in on the education requirements of how public education has failed so bad. Yeah, when we used to have books, but now we have iPads, they fucking thrown at the wall by, by autists. Not even the fun ones either. We are so cooked. We got a bunch of street shitters coming into the country that like to sexually harass boys and girls. And the superintendent's not paying attention or don't care. We got these people who can't even speak English and don't even want to assimilate into culture. All they're asking you is to use turn signals. But it's that hard. Uh, and like, don't, don't rape women, you know, and don't street, don't shit in the, on the fucking sidewalk. But Wayne Township is gonna have a lot of poo around here.
Demographics. We are a majority Students of Color School Corporation. So when we talk about diversity, we talk about our student population. But we also have here data for you regarding diverse learners. So we're at fifteen percent special education. Again, thirty-eight percent for English learners or multiling-
And what, what is fifteen percent a lot if your community, your school community is, uh, fifteen percent is special education? Is that bad? I don't know. Uh, six hundred and oh, wait a minute, uh, seven, fifteen thousand? For fifteen percent, right? Yeah. At a special education, you don't have to have like, like a disability, you could- huh? Two thousand, two hundred and fifty students. Yeah, seems like a lot, right? Like a lot. I don't think they have like the downs or anything. Not like that. Listen, we're, I, I'm sure most of us that are listening right now or watching me right now, we're all from the, like, the nineties or no, we all graduated in the late nineties or early two thousands and we're used to the special education classes. Having the people like the wheelchairs or like, you know, the, the wacky, wavy, inflatable, arm-flaring tube man kids. Um, but like the special education, now they're just in a different degree because they can't read or write. And it's probably because they're from another country, I had to guess. I would like to know what the demographics is for the special education peeps. Maybe, uh, I mean, I'll never get it, but I would be interested in that. This is gonna turn into a long video. I gotta stop talking. It's gonna turn into a two-hour video.
So again, we take great pride in serving a diverse group of students and a diverse group of learners. Next, I'm proud to present my colleague, Dr. Shanice Suggs. Thank you.
Okay, hold on. Why are you clapping? Hold on, hold on. What, what?
Next, I'm proud to present my.
Okay, we are Wayne staff. Certified eleven hundred eighty-nine, classified as a ten eighty-one, total staff twenty-two seventy. What is the difference between certified and classified? Okay, certified teachers, classified helpers? Certified are teachers and then classified are not certified teachers, like helpers and that include janitors? I don't know. It does include janitors? Oh, okay. You know. Okay. Okay. Anybody who has a license? Certified. Certified. Ask kicker.
Colleague, Dr. Shanice Suggs. Thank you.
So if they, if they have a license, they're certified.
Good evening. I am so excited to be with you tonight. Um, for several reasons. One is a long-term resident in Wayne Township. Um, as a parent of three graduates of Ben Davis High School and certainly um, as the human resources assistant superhuman resources since two thousand and nine. And I'm super proud to be starting my thirty-third year as an employee of Wayne Township. So I only have this one slide, but there are so, there's so much information and things to share behind those numbers, including, um, as, as teacher turnover, turnover is a real thing. Um, we have experienced as high as a thirteen percent turnover rate in the past. Um, we've had it as low as six point five percent. And currently, our turnover rate is eleven percent, which is trending down and we're excited about that. Um, we, um, continue our strong partnerships with our post-secondary, uh, teacher ed programs. Um, we host approximately forty to fifty student teachers yearly. Um, and just interviewed thirty-five student teachers last week and offered twenty-eight open contracts for the upcoming school year. We typically hire anywhere from eighty to a hundred teachers a year. So we are, are so excited about the talent that we're seeing coming through those programs. Um, and about, um, starting their careers in Wayne Township. Uh, along those same lines, um, the transition to teach option that the state has allowed in the last couple of years has been tremendous for us in Wayne. We have thirty-one classrooms that have transitioned to teachers in those positions. Those are folks who come to us with their bachelor's degrees and then enter those transition to teach programs to get that certification. And without that opportunity, um, we just think, you know, we'd have thirty-one spots, um, that we would struggle, uh, to cover. And so we have found incredible talent that way as well. And lastly, what I wanna share with you tonight is that in my career, I've had great opportunities to work with awesome people and staff and people who are passionate about the work that they do. Uh, my colleague and I in, in the HR office in the, the past two years conducted stay interviews. And the purpose of those stay interviews, um, the purpose was to find out why our staff stay. And more importantly, what can we do to support them? Over two hundred, uh, staff members, that included teachers, custodians, um, our paraprofessionals, our food service, uh, folks, um, volunteer to, to share with us that information. And in many of those cases, um, people were so passionate about their work and why they stay in, in, in education that they were moved to tears. Now, what makes that interesting is that when you're walking out of the HR office, you can't walk out crying. So we had to make sure people pulled it together, um, as they shared their stories. But, um, I wanted to share that information because, um, what keeps me going in Wayne is because it's Wayne. One, but two, because people come to this work, um, to do great things for children. Thank you.
Why are you clapping?
One of the things that, um, we've had a lot of conversation about, we, we do a book study every Monday in our regular meetings. One of our recent books was Monday Morning Leadership and we talked about hiring hard. It was one of the, one of the chapters in our book. I think during the pandemic, when many of us were struggling, all industries were struggling to fill positions, we had a shortage. Um, we didn't hire as hard as we once did. Uh, and that's part of one of the, the reboundings that we are currently doing is getting back to our standards on, on hiring hard and making sure we have the right people in the right places and that we're supporting them in the right ways. And you're gonna hear a little bit about that. One of the things that we were able to do because of our Esser dollars was to revisit our strategic plans. The third one that we've done since I began as superintendent fourteen, just over fourteen years ago. And when we met with our consultants who were going to lead us through this process, we said, this is not our strategic plan. It's not Jeff Butts's, it's not the Board of Educations. This has to be about our community, what our community is telling us they want. And so we're very excited as we look at our next slide and the feedback that we received from our constituents. We had over eight thousand three hundred and twenty-five of our constituents give us feedback as part of this process. Almost eleven thousand of our children were engaged. Their voices were heard through this process. Twenty-two hours of conversation, fifteen focus groups. Here's the interesting thing. When you look at the community design, ninety mem- ninety community members were, uh, per, per, participated in that. Two hundred and thirteen ideas, eighty prototypes came out of that, eighty things that they wanted us to do. That wasn't possible. That would divert our focus way too much to be, to be effective. And so we were able to, on our next slide, look at what our mission and vision and beliefs are. Now, any one of us that have been involved in that work know that there's typically a lot of things about a democratic society and, and, you know, successful citizenry and, and all of those things that nobody can ever recite. We wanted to make sure that our mission, vision, and beliefs were something that we all could recite often, and we do, and that we all understood what they meant. So when we look at our mission to activate and accelerate student learning, Chairman Graves, that's what, one of the things you talked about with literacy, right? To activate and accelerate student learning. Our vision, to develop great people. Now, what is that? It's not great students, it's not great teachers, it's not great adults. It's great people. Everybody who we have an opportunity to come in contact with, everybody who we have an opportunity to engage, our mission and vision especially is to develop great people. The other thing this causes, you and I have to agree on what greatness is. Right? We might have different definitions of what, of what that greatness looks like. And so it causes us to come together in conversation and to understand each other and what our lenses that we're looking through for that vision. Then, of course, we believe in the power of belonging, collaboration, and growth. The committee's all.
Let me ask you something, Jeff. You think I will be able to relate, or someone will be able to relate, who's never used the bathroom before? And, and someone who uses toilet paper to wipe their poo poo off their bub bub? Uh, Jeff, do you think we'll be able to collaborate and, uh, have great vision for the future? When you have two completely different cultures on how to handle things? You have one culture that's, uh, okay with marrying children. And then you have another culture who says eighteen-year-old is considered adult, and then you can get married. You have one cul- culture that's okay with stony women, uh, if they, uh, cheat on their boyfriend or husband. And then another culture who says, oh, we'll just get a divorce, no stoning involved. I'm just saying, alright, we have these cultures coming to this country. But you're saying, hey, we need to collaborate and have vision together. No, thank you.
Also came up with five values. Those five values, growth, equity, high expectations, integrity, and trust. And out of that, out of those eighty protocols, we actually came up with four areas of focus that we're gonna talk about this evening.
Oh, good god.
Those four, four areas of focus include reconceptualizing teaching and learning.
There you go.
How will Wayne Township look differently in five years than it does today? We cannot continue, it's that definition of insanity, right? We can't continue to do the same things and expect different results.
Well, it's cuz you have like a bunch of different cultures coming into the school system, that's why. They don't even know how to speak English.
Increasing our student belonging. That was critical and one of the things that we heard loud and clear from all those student voices. They need to have a sense of belonging. Dr. Suggs spoke to recruiting and retaining great staff. Hiring hard, making sure we have the right people in the right places. And then continuing that framework of building and sustaining one community. As you look at our tagline, you see we are Wayne, great schools, great community. And we truly believe we cannot have a great school system if we don't have a great community supporting us. And our community can't be great if our schools are not working to improve the quality of life and the value of our residents' homes, our businesses, and our community in general. So we've looked very, very deeply into how can we provide a greater opportunity for our teachers to develop their own craft, to support each other, and to prepare the very best opportunities for our students in the classroom. And Dr. Walters is gonna share a little bit about that work that we just, we're fortunate enough to make an announcement to our community a couple of weeks ago and look forward to implementing in twenty-five, twenty-six.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. One of the first things that we looked at under the umbrella of reconceptualizing teaching and learning was the time that was associated with our teachers being able to hone their craft and to look at the outcome of their work and our student achievement. So under that umbrella of professional development, what we currently have, um, and have had since the pandemic, uh, is varied time throughout the week where we have about twenty-five minutes depending on our teacher arrival and, and departure time. So the majority of our professional development resulted in pulling teachers out into a location.
You know what? You know, I, I, this is what I miss about the old days. We have this lady right here and her arms are tatted up. Right here, you can see like, there's a butterfly, there's a heart with a knife through it, there's some cherries, and one of them look partially popped. Looks like a, uh, looks like McDonald's fry- McDonald's fries, like a carton of what that would hold McDonald's fries right there. Like, I don't know. Gross, when teachers have that many tattoos.
And making those sort of half-day rotations to enable us to utilize subs to be more efficient. We took a look at our twenty-three, twenty-four data and that resulted in seventeen, uh, one thousand seven hundred and sixteen requests from about seventy, seven hundred and thirty-four of our staff. And equated to about twelve hundred instructional days across the course of the year. So we asked, uh, three groups to really dig into the research around current professional development systems across the country and look at how that could equate for, um, bettering the professional development in MSD Wayne. Those three looked at early release, which typically equates to about an hour at the end of the day where students are released early. Late start, which typically is associated with a two-hour delay at the beginning of the day. And then mainly in Colorado, uh, with a lot of schools opting into this is the four-day work week, uh, where students attend only four days, but staff works five days. So again, what Dr. Butts said, we are excited.
Really?
In our next slide to share.
Hold on, wait, wait.
A two-hour delay at the beginning of the day.
That's interesting.
And then mainly in Colorado, uh, with a lot of schools opting into this is the four-day work week, uh, where students attend only four days, but staff works five days.
Okay, so how does that work for the parents then? When they were, when they, they have a job, when you say, hey, we should have a four-day student week? How does that help the parents then? When they're like, okay, now I have to figure out different babysitting arrangements, or I have to find out a way for my kid to be taken care of because I'm at work. So I can pay the bills and pay the taxes for your three hundred thousand dollar superintendent.
So again, what Dr. Butts said, we are excited, uh, in our next slide to share what we are going to do next year. Beginning in twenty-five, twenty-six, we are looking at a structured full day of professional learning, four days a year. All of our schools, a day in September, a day in November, a day in February, and a day in May, will come together and be able to look at the entire spectrum of K through twelve work in really.
That'll be interesting. So they're gonna have a two-hour delay every Monday.
Structured ways. In addition, we want our buildings to be able to focus their efforts that are specific to either content area or grade level. So we will host a late arrival every Monday.
You know, it does seem like these public schools are, are making more problems than there has to be. And maybe they should start asking themselves, you know, things used to work really well, and then something happened. What happened? And then you should, you know, go back to how things used to be good when we didn't have these problems.
Which will equate to essentially running a two-hour delay bell schedule. That time will allow our teachers, our staff to come together and really look at again how they're honing their craft and what is the outcome with the student achievement associated with that. At this time, that loved topic, I'll ask Dr. Pierce to come talk about what the work she's done with literacy.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to have us here this evening. Um, I'm Dr. Heather Pierce and I am a proud graduate of Ben Davis High School. Was able to start my teaching career, um, in the elementary schools of Wayne Township. And then most recently served as a principal for many years, um, and am new in this role, just my second year as the assistant superintendent for elementary education. Um, as Dr. Butts shared, one of the things that we've been working on is reconceptualizing teaching and learning. And a big component of that was looking at literacy instruction and how that was taking place in our schools. And we were able to start this year some action research, really looking at each of our eleven schools and bringing together a group of literacy leaders, our teachers who are in the building, our instructional coaches in the district, um, experts in reading. And we know that research tells us that getting that collective efficacy, getting that group of educators together, um, there's great power in that. And that's what we've been able to do and to really identify what are the needs in each of our schools and how can we address those needs.
Or, you know, maybe tell the parents to get more involved.
And so what you see here on this slide is one school, um, an example of one school. And what they did is they identified what are our three high priorities? And what will it look like when we have accomplished these goals? And so they did a vision board or a destination postcard. When we've reached that destination, this is what we will see occurring in our school. And these are our three high priorities for achieving that. This particular school identified that they have very strong tier-one core instruction. And they are getting a pretty high percentage of students passing I read three. But where they're struggling is in that tier-two and tier-three intervention. And so you'll see when you look at their goals there, it all centers around alignment. So aligning what's happening in tier-two instruction to what is happening in the classroom. The leaders, the principals are in the classrooms, they're monitoring the instructional quality, monitoring the instructional quality of the interventions as well. And then this postcard is something that all the teachers have, that they reference, that they know this is visually what it looks like when we achieve our goal here at this school. On the next slide, you'll see some other ways we looked at reconceptualizing teaching and learning. Dr. Butts talked about the great number of mentors who we have come in and work with our students in reading. We also really wanted to make sure that that partnership was solid with our families.
You know what you need? You need a scared straight, but for school. Like you need these big, six-foot-eight black dudes and say, if you don't fucking know how to read, you're gonna get raped. Maybe not that far, maybe not, maybe a little bit too much, but something like that. It needs something to just scare the crap out of these children of where they're stopped goofing around. Maybe bring in like a dog collar, maybe like a cattle prod. Yeah, Faraday cage around the room so they can't getting any internet. Bring back more actual books, get them off the iPads. That would probably help.
And with our parents. And so.
I mean, not to say like, you know, Jerome from B Block, is a bad idea, isn't a bad idea, but, you know, you know what I mean?
We held parent-teacher conferences with every single family, looked at the students' data, their child's data, so they could see where their child was with reading, talked about the importance.
Yo, you better, you better read Winnie the Pooh, or your poo is getting pushed in.
Of reading and the importance of reading at school and reading at home. We've provided resources to all families so they can access books digitally as well as hard copies of books. We also started an after-school reading tutoring program. And we provide transportation and snacks for students. And so we've made that really accessible so that, um, that barrier of transportation is not there for families. Um, so we're really excited about the work that we're doing, um, in literacy and excited to see the gains in our students. Gonna invite Dr. Walters back up.
One of the things that the recent high school redesign allowed us to do within reconceptualizing teaching and. One of the things that the recent high school redesign allowed us to do within reconceptualizing teaching and learning is to take a look at a, with a really laser focus on the opportunities that we're providing our students in that seven-through-twelve experience. And so the next slide does have all of the information. I'm, I'm anticipating that you're somewhat well-versed in, in the recent legislation that, that led to this redesign. We could spend the next six hours talking about the intricacies of this. Um, but really, one slide back, I think, is, is of the importance. Uh, MSD Wayne is well-positioned to use this work and continue the conversation that we've been having around aligning a student's interest with what those goals are for life after high school. So, with the new redesign, we will definitely do a general audit of our course offerings. We began that work about three years ago with regard to CTE offerings outside of our Career Center. We certainly know that we need to increase access to credentials of value in schools outside of our Career Center. And then increase that staff training in work-based learning. That is a, a shift for educators. When educators think about the relationship between the content that they teach in the classroom and how that content and those durability skills carry forward with students. So, we'll continue to increase the training, uh, for them to build that capacity around those work-based learning experiences for students. And then.
We, I, you know, I was having this conversation the other day with, uh, somebody about this whole scholarship thing. And I was, I, you know, originally this new scholarship, high school diploma redesign, I was on board with. And then I heard, I watched the committee meeting. And I was like, okay, this is merely because for tax purposes, this has nothing to do with, um, you know, trying to get better. Just like, how do we get the cattle onto the grass so we can, they kept talking about return on investment. That was the big thing from one of these committee meetings. There was the ROI. How do we get the return on investment? Cause they're just looking at, at all these children, everybody in school. It's like, well, how, if we get put money of this, if the taxpayers put money into this thing, how, and how much and when will we get our return on investment? And this, it's just really sad, that's all. I mean, it's, it's a much bigger problem than just this, but it doesn't make things any better.
And just as elementary has done in this past year with an increased focus on attendance, we anticipate with aligning, uh, with these new diploma requirements in the attendance requirement to make sure that we have those tier-one, tier-two, and tier-three interventions available for our seven-through-twelve students in attendance. Two slides ahead, uh, I will highlight, um, again, we do have a fully functional, well-merited, uh, Career Center. Area thirty-one Career Center is attached to our building and serves eleven sending schools. It is, uh, in the past has been, will continue to be where those passions become professions. Uh, but what we really want to continue, um, and really pull to scale is their ability to offer the college credits for students, the associate's degree through our early college model, and all of the credentials that students are able to be awarded throughout that high school experience. So, again, taking that model and really working to scale in the rest of our nine-through-twelve spaces. At this time, I believe I will ask for Dr. Butts to come back to the podium.
Yeah, I, I know the question was asked of, of, uh, my colleagues. And by the way, thank you for saving us for last, or second to last, maybe, third to last, somewhere in that range. Gave us great opportunity to talk to our colleagues as well. And I know that, uh, there's some great work going on around, around the city with, with my other Marion County colleagues, but, um, did want to emphasize eleven sendings, or eleven districts that feed into our Career Center. Three in Marion County, eight in Hendricks County. So, um, a lot of, a lot of schools, unfortunately, with some of these changes in our diploma. Requirements, the interest in career, pursuing career and technical opportunities, we turn away about nine hundred students a year. And so that's one of the challenges we're looking at, nine hundred students who apply who we do not have seats for, uh, just from a space constraint. So, we're looking at branching out in other, others of our membership districts, trying to find opportunities to find additional seat time, seat space. And of course, we're working very hard as part of the Simmons I Lab Group, um, to provide work-based learning experiences in, in addition to what we offer in Area Thirty-One. You're well aware of the six hundred million dollars that Lilly has pledged for the, uh, Marion County Schools, four hundred and fifty million of which is, uh, earmarked towards the traditional public schools. We all submitted our Phase Two grant, which was due Valentine's Day, February the fourteenth, actually just heard.
I hate this, all right? I hear Katie Jenner say this all the time, the Indiana Literacy Cadre. You know, according to the cadre, the cadre, what the fuck is a cadre? God, I hate all these new terms, all right? You know, you broke what was working and now you gotta make, you know, I think I actually looked it up one time, but it's not important enough for me to remember because I don't have to remember any of this crap, but. I like this. The Phase Two, the Teaching for Effective Learning, the Facilitator Training, Executive Coach Training. You know, whenever I hear words like this, I automatically think of a pyramid scheme. Hey, we got some coach training going on right now, boys. Hey, we're gonna sell some poop bars. Make sure your neighbors and your family buys them too. They can become a coach trainer.
Heard back today, all of us heard back today, uh, that Eli Lilly is ready to provide us with feedback and meet with us on that Phase Two. For the MSD of Wayne, uh, with our match, it's about nine hundred dollars. And so one of the goals of the Eli Lilly Grant is to create sustainable change. So, we learned very astutely or very keenly during the pandemic that the addition of programs doesn't create sustained change. So, we have dedicated Phase Two completely to staff training, uh, to help our teachers and our administrators to, to be able to provide stronger opportunities for students in the classroom. That is sustainable. That doesn't go away when you give them new tools and new strategies and, and pour into them. So, a hundred and fifty of our administrators will go through the National Institute for School Leadership. That'll actually happen over the next thirteen months. Uh, and then from there, those individuals will be able to support eight hundred and forty teachers who are going to be going through that Teaching for Effective Learning, Action Research over the next four years. So, we're excited to out, to roll both of those out. We know through Action Research, both, you learn things from what works and you learn things from what doesn't work. And so we're excited to pour into our teachers that two-hour professional development opportunity that we are providing every Monday is gonna also help us to facilitate and support that work that's happening in the classrooms. And then working.
I shut up, Butts, hold on. I did a little chat GPT real quick. What the hell is the Indiana Literacy Cadre? It's a collaborative initiative aimed at ensuring Indiana students achieve reading proficiency by the end of the third grade. Established the partnership, blah, blah, blah. The cadre focuses on providing professional development for K three-three educators statewide. The training is grounded in the science of reading. An evidence-based body of research on reading development instruction. Why, when, you know, don't make me go through the rabbit hole, the science of reading thing. It sounds like a giant scam to make kids a little bit more dumb. Is this like a Bill Gates thing? Is this like Common Core? Is this Obama? God, things used to be so much, people used to be so much smarter back then. Back in the day, I missed the nineties.
With, uh, obviously some of our artificial intelligence partners to create data systems and, and, and databases in which our teachers can pull from, that the learnings that, that they're going to have from the other teachers that have gone through that act, action research. Even when the grant ends, the skills gained through the National Institute of School Leadership, the Teacher for Effective Learning, the Action Research that we have, have gained.
That's what it was. All right, here it is. The national, you know, it happened in like the sixties or seventies, but. Let's see, and later cognitive scientists, let's see, the National Reading Panel's two thousand report was a major milestone solidifying the core principles of science of reading. Really? Cause I don't feel like we had these issues back then. I remember hooked on phonics and that was about it, but overall, like, we didn't have these problems in the nineties or the eighties. Seems like you just made everything worse.
And so that is not dependent upon continued dollars. And then, of course, we want to extend our opportunity to work with the Indiana Literacy Cadre. It's been tremendously effective. Coming up in April.
Cadre is crap.
Due, and you can see Phase Three takes a, a much different approach. These are all of the entities that we are working with, uh, and that we are partnering with. We're actually having to scale back. We, we thought it'd be challenging for us to spend forty million dollars in, in five years, uh, but what we found is.
Just a giant money scam, that's all.
And so, uh, we've.
Our roads are still fucked up and kids are getting a little more dumb.
Really about student supports, bridging gaps with communities, uh, pouring into our, our students who may not be able to get into a work-based learning experience, but still want to earn that workplace seal. Looking at how we leverage some of our university partners and the, the great work that they're doing. Uh, and so that's going to be really for us, Phase Three. You also see Cummins Mental Health on there, which is increasing the mental health supports that we provide to our students. We already have a relationship with Cummins Mental Health. We already have open hours for any student who would like to see a counselor. We'd like to increase that so that we have more hours for those students, uh, who may need to see a counselor for a short period of time. Obviously, the pandemic expedited, uh, the, the work that many of us were already doing in the space of digital learning. Uh, and we know that cyber.
You know what? I blame digital learning. Like, I blame the iPad kids. I, I, I blame all that stuff of not having actual books. But at, at the same time, we had like this whole scam with the, with the books too. They're, they're making sure that these, these contracts and how much the, uh, the publishing companies were getting too. Everything's a giant scam. If we had more executions, we will be able to solve a lot more problems.
For attacks, I don't, I don't know if you've gotten the Toll Road email or, or, uh, message yet that you owe a toll. And, uh, you know, that's a huge phishing scheme right now. I saw, um, Attorney General Riquita also tweeted out about, I think I've gotten that three times so far. Um, so I always go into Illinois Tollway because that's the only one that I've had recently and, nope, it's still, still no balance. So, uh, but cybersecurity is something, a matter of fact, one of our colleagues up in the north part of Indiana just got hit last week with, uh, cybersecurity issue with some ransomware. And so, Dr. Harvey's gonna talk a little bit about the work that we're doing to try to protect our systems and the, the learning, uh, systems that we utilize with our students.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman and members of the committee.
Oh, my God. No. Hello, my friends. How are you? God, we are so done.
We take pride in what we do for our students and our infrastructure. Uh, we value our assets and human, human assets and infrastructure. So, we place a lot of, um, work and finance on protecting our assets. Every, most of our, um, books are digital now and every student has a Chromebook or an iPad.
Yeah, that's a problem.
Those students have to both learn in school and learn at home, right? So, we have to make sure that we are protecting them when it comes to intrusion, cyber attack.
Well, maybe we should just have books instead of iPads, huh?
Or child predators, I am trying to harm them, so.
You know how you reduce the child predator stuff too? You make it where students can't contact their teachers. I'm just saying. What a revolutionary idea.
We have placed systems in place to make sure that, um, our internet is safe, our network is secured. And if you have to gain access, you have to have the right authorization to gain access to our network. We have been using E-rate, um, dollars, uh, from federal government to make sure that we buy all the access. The devices are proxy, saying that they do. We make sure that for systems not, or get able to clean our system before it becomes into a, turns into a catastrophe. Um, I'm done for now. Thank you.
Wonderful.
Good evening, Chairman and members of the committee. I joke with, with Cabinet that the finance and operations guy often ends up at the inn, so have no fear, we're closing in. But the exciting world of school finance and, uh, through the lens of energy savings. I know that you all are aware of, of the school funding mechanisms, but.
I wish you'd get paid, pal.
The story of how MSD of Wayne Township got to the energy savings world really i- is connected to that. Um, as you know, Indiana has property tax caps and MSD of Wayne Township is a district that has a pretty significant impact annually, um, from those, uh, from the circuit breaker impact. Last year, uh, about nineteen and a half million. So, instead of collecting twenty-five million in our operations fund, we collected five and a half million, about three hundred and fifteen dollars per student. And so those dollars need to fund our utilities, our transportation, um, our custodial teams, the office of the superintendent, the business office. Um, so, so we don't have, uh, an ability to collect enough dollars in our operations fund to pay for all of those things. And so, uh, the state legislature does allow us to transfer dollars from the education fund, which is how we make those ins meet. But it did, uh, a number of years ago, when those property tax caps became, uh, part of our state constitution, push the leadership of Wayne Township to think about how we can be better stewards of those dollars and how we can drive more of those dollars back into the classroom. And so, um, as you can see, um, the energy savings, um, that we've been able to, to work on, uh, include some of the pictures that you see up here on this, uh, on this slide. The picture on the left is, uh, the solar array that is behind Ben Davis High School. It powers most of Ben Davis High School on a given day. It also has two natural gas generators that can pop on and supplement the energy supply of, um, the schools on that campus.
How long is a lifetime?
The bottom picture, or the picture on the right, is our energy dashboard. And so we have partnered through a guaranteed energy savings plan with Verge. And this dashboard really allows our operations team and Verge to monitor our energy usage, uh, to ensure that we are being wise with, with how we deploy the energy savings ideas that we utilize. And so, aside from solar, one of those is our batteries that we have at nine sites now. Those just came online uh, last fall. Again, without getting into too much detail, rates for schools for electricity are based off of your highest usage in a given month. And so, what those batteries are designed to do is collect energy, uh, during the evening when there's less, uh, less demand for that within the building. And then monitor where that is at. Let's say it is a hundred and two degrees outside. We're running all of our chillers at full power. It's gonna come alongside the power we're grabbing from the grid and push it down to keep it below a set point to not ratchet up our bill.
All right, so I, we based it on just a student's lifetime, seventy, eighty, seventy to eighty years. So, they're saving fifty-seven thousand to, or fifty to seven, fifty thousand to fifty-seven thousand dollars a year. That's just now. That doesn't include maintenance. That doesn't include if a solar panel breaks. Uh, the solar panels don't last as long as some people might think. Plus, we don't know what kind of, uh, quality we have.
For electricity. So, those are the energy savings plans when it comes to our physical buildings across the district. We, uh, just have four buildings now that, that don't have either a solar array or a battery assisting.
Twenty-five to thirty years for a solar.
The power supply that they use and receive. Another way that we're doing that is through propane buses. Uh, this year is the first year that all of our ninety-two daily bus routes are powered by propane. Um, and so.
What?
What this slide really demonstrates is, uh, the savings that we are, are accruing because we're using propane instead of diesel. So, we, propane costs a little bit less than diesel. And then, uh, what you see on the top there, that line would be, um, the cost if we were a full diesel fleet. Whereas, uh, the graph below that is showing our actual spend on energy to power our buses. And so, recouping a few hundred thousand dollars every year that, again, we can push right back into the classroom, uh, to fund, uh, the people who work with our students.
How much did it cost for the propane buses? That's just the fuel cost. How much did the actual bus cost? That's what I want to know.
And obviously, continue to be.
This is, this is what they call shifting the narrative. This is only half-truths. Yeah, the, the fuel is fine, but how much did the gas cost? Because, you, you know what? Hold on.
The stewards of the dollars that we have.
Very proud of this video, but for the sake of time, uh, it is on YouTube. You are welcome to, to view it at your leisure. It, uh, goes a little bit deeper into what Mr. Samuel just talked about. You know, in addition to the solar arrays that we have.
Okay, it's about the same.
We, at the last two projects, the Education Center and now the Transportation Center, we did not have enough roof space to net meter the buildings that we needed to net meter. So, we created space. We created canopies that we could set the solar panels on. Um, and so the transportation building that we're currently building, just behind the fire headquarters, you're probably familiar with if you travel around four sixty-five and see the big white fire headquarters building. That will have canopies that will actually net meter four other buildings, uh, that will go online hopefully late spring. In addition to the solar energy, and this all started, again, we talk about student voice, uh, and you go to the next slide. We talk about student voice. Yeah, go ahead and exit out of that.
Must have been the video.
This all started because we had a group at the Area Thirty-One Career Center called the Green Giants. We are the Ben Davis Giants. They called themselves the Green Giants and came to us and said, we need for you to do better. We are wasting a whole lot of energy in this, in this district and the air, energy consumption we have is massive. And so, we have replaced all of our fixtures to be LED. We have changed our controls to be variable speed. We have improved our boilers and our chillers. We have done a number of things outside, created sensors in the rooms to turn lights off when they're not being occupied. So, it's more than just solar and propane. Uh, and the propane buses, by the way, don't get nearly as dirty. They don't require near as much maintenance as, as our diesel buses do. We thought we had two electric. We thought we had two electric buses coming. That has been halted, uh, in the, in the recent months, uh, with some funding and, and other things that are going on, but we are exploring.
Apparently the, uh, the propane, propane bus has a shorter lifespan, oh, lifespan.
Possibility for electric-
That's why he's saying that diesel does last a little bit longer, but costs more to maintain. Propane buses save money on fuel and repair costs. They may need replacements sooner. Who could say?
Buses that'll be actually charged from those, that solar array at the transportation center. So we're very proud of that work.
I doubt it. I doubt it. That sounds fake. Sounds fake.
IPL has raised, or AES has raised our rates seventy percent in the last ten years.
Yeah, no kidding.
So that four million dollar number that you see that we've saved today, we're at about a million and a half a year. Uh, which is where those numbers will vary depending on what month we're reporting. But that's four million dollars that we can put back in the classroom that we're not sending to AES. And we joke that every time your utility companies increase our rates, we save more money. And that's really our goal. We've talked sidebar a little bit about creating our own power plants. People get a little nervous when you talk, start talking about putting Chernobyl in your, in your, in your neighborhoods.
Oh my God.
But there are power plants that do burn aluminum and create enough power to, to power a building, enough steam to power a building. And also then creates, uh, a byproduct that you can sell back on the market.
Yeah, one of the, uh, the recycling places already does that right now, but everybody over there is throwing a giant fit about it.
So it's a revenue generator, um, which gets into a whole lot of other issues when you're a nonprofit. But, so we continue to look for the best ways to save those taxpayer dollars to go into the classrooms and not to go out into other spaces like utilities. With that, um, we are over time and we greatly appreciate your patience and attention and be happy to answer any questions, to elaborate on anything, uh, that we have shared or anything that we did not.
Thank you very much, Doctor, and, and, and your entire team, uh, for such a robust presentation of all the great things that's happening over in MSD Wayne Township. I want to give my colleagues on the committee an opportunity to ask questions. And, uh, counselor, go right ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, again, thank you, Dr. Butts and team. Um, you serve our community well. I am so proud to be, uh, part of the group that supports you and works alongside you to do what we need to do. And I have a lot of things, more things that I could say, but I will yield back my time.
Chairman Boots?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Butts and your team. Just a couple of quick questions to clarify. You're talking about the district demographics. Um, the high ability percentage. Can you clarify a little bit on what that category, the scope of that?
Absolutely. Dr. Harris, would you like to speak? There's a, there's a national standard, um, and really, so overall. You know, the high ability should be approximately ten percent of your student population, uh, as you look at, as you look at the identification of those. It truly, it's a special population, just like any other population that we have. And so we work very hard to identify the right students that are truly high ability students who need to have that differentiated curriculum at that level, um, for their own learning and to, to, to drive them. We differentiate in every one of our classrooms. But the high ability is a very specific curriculum to meet the needs of those highest ability learners. And typically that sends, stays around ten percent of, of a student population. Anything that-
Oh, that's so funny. They didn't want the, the word gifted. That's what was throwing me off about the high ability. I did a little chat GPT-ish. Many schools are now using high ability to define students who excel academically, sometimes to avoid the, the exclusivity implied by gifted. Are you kidding me? Is this because of like X-Men? Haha, for mutants, the other school of the gifted. Haha. Oh, man.
Yeah, we, we have taken, one of the things that we've worked hard to do is to take the bias out of our identification. Um, and so teacher recommendation has become a significant part of our process. Uh, it's not just test scores. It's also a teacher's personal observation of a student's ability to learn. And so that has become part of our process as we've looked at how do we make sure we're identifying the right children, um, not just the ones who are scoring the highest on tests.
Go right ahead. Quick follow-up. Thank you. Um, as you may know, uh, artificial intelligence is obviously right around the corner.
Yep.
Um, our own council has a commission on artificial intelligence and how to-
Blame.
Get that platform adopted by the city. Um, it piqued my curiosity when I saw it mentioned on what you're doing. Can you just have the doctor explain a little bit what, how you're using AI in the delivery of your services?
So we're pretty similar to the rest of the world. We're, um, exploring something that is growing faster than anything that is ever, that we've ever experienced in our lifetime. Um, and also trying to understand some of the challenges or the pitfalls with artificial intelligence, especially in open network versus a closed network. We're looking at several platforms right now, um, especially looking at how do we help AI to be a colleague for our teachers, not just a tool, but a colleague for our teachers and a partner for our students. So not just utilizing it to create reference letters or to draft a resume or to synthesize a, a larger document. But how do we work within, for instance, a PLC, a professional learning community with our teachers, to take that artificial intelligence platform, to provide meaningful feedback, to, to more quickly analyze data, to provide instructional strategies, to, um, look at lesson designs and to provide that additional feedback as a colleague, similarly with students. And so one of the things that, um, our teachers are exploring and having to wrap their head around is how do we gain comfort in the drafting of a work product through an artificial intelligence platform? And one of the things that the teachers are really exploring is either writing it by hand. I will tell you that Encyclopedia Britannica provided me that opportunity too, right? To write by hand. That may not necessarily completely been my, my own thought. Um, so that's been around for a long time. But what questions are our students asking that platform? It takes four to five or more good questions to get to a solid product through the artificial intelligence platforms. And so many of our staff are starting to ask students, give us the questions that you asked. And, and we're not saying that this work product is bad, but what questions did you ask to get to this, to this product? So we're, we're as, we were probably fairly late to the game, but we are part of the pilot with the state to explore artificial intelligence uh, in, in our schools. Conmigo at the secondary and Amir at the, at the elementary schools, uh, are what we have been exploring the past year, year and a half? Yeah.
Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for your presentation along with your staff. Um, I, I have kind of several questions that I, I wanted to lean into. Um, really four different areas. Um, a little bit on the funding formula, not too much. Uh, want to talk a little bit about third grade performance. Uh, want to ask a question around pre-K, uh, availability of pre-K classrooms. Um, uh, a little bit about diversity of your staffing. You talk about the school, diversity of staffing, and then teacher retention. I might not get all, to all of those, but I wanted to place those, um, on, um, you know, this session, uh, with our friends on the other side of, uh, Washington Street has sparked a lot of conversation around education funding.
Yes.
Um, and, uh, the assistant superintendent was going to lean into that a little bit, uh, but it's clear that funding through public education does not come through the council. That is at the state house.
Right.
Uh, and so there's been some, I think, some confusion as to what it means for us as we're doing these hearings. Our intention, and I think through the chairman, is to get as much information as we can to see how the council could supplement what we think are some areas of growth for Marion County. Um, and so, and so I just wanted to say that, uh, because as we start thinking about education funding, uh, oftentimes we get pushed as if it happens in this chamber and it doesn't. It happens in the state house. Um, um, question around third grade performance?
Yes.
Um, share a little bit about your third grade performance. I know that the third graders are getting ready or are in the midst of I read right now.
This week.
Um, and so I want to hear about your third grade performance. Um, more specifically for me, uh, the state law that was passed last year, that students that do not meet proficiency in third grade will be held or referred to summer school or held back in the third grade. So tell me a little bit about third grade performance for, for Wayne.
It's been, it's been a significant area. It's one of the reasons Dr. Pierce, um, focused so much on that. She worked very hard with our teacher leaders and our administrators over the summer to really create some action research around literacy this year and our engagement. We had six teachers who were, or six schools that were required to participate in literacy cadre. We chose to have all eleven of our elementary schools because we felt like from an equity standpoint, it was critical that all eleven of our schools were having the same conversations and we're, we're learning the same strategies through the cadre. Our partner is the University of Indianapolis, Sell, the University of Indianapolis is our partner for the literacy cadre. Uh, we, the addition of our, of our, our reading interventionists have been critical for us. And that high dosage tutoring that Dr. Pierce alluded to after school, where we have specifically identified those students who are within passing range that we can, uh, that we could pour into during the first three, several months of this calendar year and providing transportation so that those students didn't have a barrier to transportation because of the way our transportation system is set up. That after-school tutoring is two hours a day. By the time we can get buses back to pick those students up and take them. So that means we're feeding our students at night as well. Uh, and we already had a, a program where we fed dinner to our students in, in various programs because it has to be tied to an academic component when you're a, a community eligible school. And so we're cautiously optimistic because our data is showing that our students, uh, are at a much higher level going into I read three than they have been in the past. So the strategies that we put into place this year, and then looking at our second graders that have, uh, that are also uh, being assessed and determining on whether or not they are on track to pass I read three has been critically important for us. So I'd love to give you-
What was the proficiency rate last year for I read three?
Sixty-six percent last year. And then of course it grows over the summer, um, as, as we have students. So our data is showing if they match up, uh, with our AMIRA data is showing that we will be much higher in our first pass rate this, this, uh, spring. We also then have the opportunity now, the Department of Education just gave us, to be able to test those students again at the end of the school year before summer school to see if they will pass it. So that we might be able to catch them before they're going into summer school.
The chairman is going to tell me I'm running out of time, so let me, let me get to, uh, so sixty-six percent, there are a number of other superintendents that have come and present in this chamber uh, that we've heard, uh, lower numbers, right? And, and has given us some, some concern. And so congratulations. I know the work is not complete. Uh, a part of our job and, and our design, our commitment is to see how we can supplement that understanding that we don't fund it. But it's still not satisfactory for us for any one of our third graders not to be in proficiency level. How many pre-K programs do you have, currently have within your township? Uh, and what's your, your, your waitlist looking like for parents that want to get their child?
This has nothing to do with kids actually, you know, their parents. This whole pre-K thing is ridiculous. This has nothing to do with parents trying to get their kids to learn better. It has everything to do with kids wanting to, for someone to babysit their children. If they really cared about their kids getting smarter and being ready for kindergarten, they would be more involved. It's literally that it. That's it. That's it. But they don't want to.
Me, I, I, I also, I do want to speak to, not excuse, but certainly a, a factor that we do, um, remain aware of forty-two percent of our children are multilingual learners.
Yes.
And so some of our third graders are learning English. Um, so to ask them to pass a reading test at proficiency is a tall order.
Okay, deport. See you later. Haha.
Um, and we know that by no fault of, of, of our communities, um, many of our students are not coming to us kindergarten-ready either. And so we push for kindergarten readiness as well. We have a centralized preschool. We also have a Title One pre-K that we offer. Our centralized preschool currently serves four hundred and fifty, almost five hundred right now. Um, it is a, all of our teachers are certified through the state of Indiana. We do run a preschool as well in addition to, uh, or I'm sorry, a daycare in, in addition to the preschool. So students can participate in both. We are currently adding eight classrooms that should be finished soon. July. Um, eight classrooms so that we could add additional staff. What we're finding, Head Start is doing a phenomenal job of, of identifying and notifying us of those students who are coming in. So we are growing at a faster rate than, um, than we could currently manage. And so we're adding eight classrooms to that preschool. We currently supplement, and this is an important fact, we currently supplement the preschool at just over a million dollars out of the general fund that, that is supposed to be supporting K through twelve education because preschool is not fully funded.
Yes. Do you currently have a waitlist for preschool?
We, we try to accommodate all of our students. It's one of the reasons we're adding those eight classrooms. We know that we have to serve all of our students who have a disability. And then our challenge is, quite frankly, to find enough community, um, preschoolers to, to fill out that balance that, that we need to have to be a level four, a path to quality and an AC accredited preschool.
Absolutely. And thank you for, thank you for, for, for the work that you're doing. Uh, it, it is part of my commitment that I believe in universal pre-K. That every child in Marion County should have access to pre-K education. So I want to-
We're currently working with, and I don't know if any of my colleagues have spoken to this, but we're currently working with Indianapolis African American Quality of Life Initiative to truly identify our black students who are not accessing preschool through grants and, and other opportunities.
So you're saying all the, only the black community is struggling with this? Is that's what you're saying? Hey, we need to talk to the black community. Figure out how we get some grants because they're the only ones that are really having this problem. Good call, Jeff Butts.
Um, and it's, we're currently having dialogue back and forth, but our, our focus has been on going out in the community and working with community partners because that was important to that committee that we not just-
It's almost like the black community doesn't care about the pre-K. They just want old daddy government to take care of them.
Pull all of those students into our Wayne Township preschool, but that we also help our community partners who are doing the work in, in Wayne Township as well to better serve the students who are in their preschools.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Chairman, can I ask one more question? Um, on, uh, the teacher retention, um, I, I, it's, you know, as an educator, I, I know the importance of, of, of leveling down-
Dude, you're a doctor in ministry. Shut the fuck up.
Development. So using, uh, the support that we're getting from the philanthropic world to do that work is, 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 is necessary, is valuable and will have a lasting impact.
Here, here's an idea. All the people that want pre-K, we should double or triple their taxes then. How about we do that? If they're so like gung ho about it, they can pay for it.
I'm somewhat cautious though to hear that you lose anywhere from ten to sixteen, I think, uh, thirteen percent of your workforce every year. Um, what have you learned, uh, from the research about why people stay? Um, as to why folks are leaving and is there, there's definitely room to reduce that, that number, especially if you're doubling down, uh, and putting millions of dollars into professional development?
And we have, so we have learned that teaching is hard. And we have learned that many are leaving the profession. Uh, when we look at our number one reason on why those individuals are leaving our school district is to go to other professions. Um, number two, are teachers who are going to their own community. They're, they're finding opportunities and those districts are paying what we pay because we traditionally have paid higher for our staff. And districts, because they've been short-staffed, are willing to pay more for teachers coming in with experience. Um, and so they can be on their students' calendar. They can have less travel time. About seventy-five percent of our teachers, uh, live in another community. They do not live in the MSD of Wayne Township. It's just the opposite when you look at our classified staff. Um, and we do not outsource anything. Our board believes very strongly in supporting our community and the, the individuals who are working in our district from the community. We believe it provides a great deal of loyalty and pride. And so about seventy-five percent of our classified staff do live in our district, uh, but it's just the opposite for our certified staff.
Counselor Bain?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, um, Dr. Butts for your presentation. Um, two questions. I think it's kind of gearing towards that focus area. Three on recruiting and retaining great staff. Um, how do you measure a teacher's success? And then what rewards or incentives do you have for your top performing teacher?
He asked this question for all of them. Good question though. Very good question.
Three thousand dollars for our top performing teachers at, at the top of the scale. Um, we're, we're very proud of our, uh, of our-
Well, you're making three hundred thousand.
We hope to provide, you know, one of the things that we know, and one of the things Dr. Suggs, uh, has shared often. People don't often stay in a job because of the pay. They stay in the job because of the work environment and the people that they work with. And so, uh, our investment in pouring into our teachers professional develop, we're already hearing from teachers in other districts that they wish their district would do it. We believe that by pouring into our teachers and helping them to be their very best, to giving them that time, uh, to grow, that that will be a retention strategy for us. Um, and we're also working hard to provide them with less stress. Uh, that is something that we continue to hear is, is driving individuals out of the profession. Um, ironically, I had a email this morning from a, a young lady that I promised a job to four years ago when I gave her a superintendent scholarship to pursue education. So it's always nerve wracking when I promise somebody a job and don't know if I have one for her, but come to find out, we were offering her one today anyway. So, uh, promise, promise fulfilled. Um, so it's, and the stay interviews have been invaluable for us. They really have. The, we, as Dr. Suggs talked briefly about, we interview people that are early in their career, mid-career and late in career. Because there are various factors throughout those, those time periods that determine why somebody stays in our district. We always hear, well, mostly we hear when people leave, what they, why they left or what they didn't like. Um, but we also, to Dr. Suggs' point, want to know why they stay. And so ten percent turnover is pretty, pretty common when you look at, when you look at a workforce. Um, we've been as low as eight, I think, in, in six percent, just, you know, prior to the pandemic. So we'd love to get back to that number again. Uh, but I, as I mentioned earlier, we have not hired as hard as we once did before the pandemic. Um, so some of the- Um, so some of the teachers that we hired probably weren't the right fit for our district and certainly um for the profession.
Okay, so just to confirm, you do have um programs out there to financially reward top performing teachers?
We do not provide additional pay outside of what the state offers for teachers who are performing. It's an expectation of ours. Uh, we expect our teachers to be high performers. If they're not high performers, then we're going to give them the supports or we're going to help them to find a better opportunity.
Okay, and then um I'd also ask, how do you measure a teacher's success?
I just want to make sure that I heard that right.
Right, it's it's based on performing. It's an fit for our district and certainly.
Programs out there to.
Are performing. It's an expectation of ours. Uh, we expect our teachers to be high performers.
Programs out there to financial. Okay, so just to confirm, you do have um programs out there to financially reward top performing teachers?
We do not provide additional pay outside of what the state offers for teachers who are performing. It's an expectation of ours. Uh, we expect our teachers to be high performers. If they're not high performers, then we're going to give them the supports or we're going to help them to find a better opportunity.
Yeah, that's funny. You get a pizza party, that's about it. You don't get a, you don't get a pay increase, you don't get a bonus for doing a tremendous amount of work. You're just, you're expected to do your job well, no matter how many kids might throw up on you, cause a problem. Their parents yell at you for some reason because they're fucking dumb, all the above. Gee, I wonder why there's so many people leaving the field.
Okay, and then um I'd also ask, how do you measure a teacher's success?
You know, that's been, boy, that's the age old challenge, right? It's it's based on the evaluator and the tool that we utilize. We've spent a great deal of time this year with our administrators and evening professional development on trying to develop consistency, take as much subjectivity out of the evaluation process. Um, and and try to help our administrators to know exactly what our standard is that we're looking for so that we do have some consistency in a in a building. I'll take Lynn Hur's seventh and eighth grade center, which serves Mars Hill, a a community that we both split. We have three evaluators in that building. So we don't want a teacher's evaluation to be dependent upon who the evaluator is, but in fact, what we expect and what the tool is measuring. And so we also anticipate, as we're looking at moving into TEL or Teaching for Effective Learning, that that action research is going to help teachers to learn from each other. Uh, on best practices that they can put into the classrooms.
Okay, so is last question then, is that, is that like a rubric that you have then that plays into that, is standardized test scores part of that? Um, what exactly does that?
So our rubric is our, is the bulk of the evaluation, um, determination. The teacher also has a primary and a secondary, if they would like to, they could have a tertiary data source that they uh identify during their pre-evaluation conference. And so that's really a discussion between the evaluator and the um, the teacher. Not all teachers have a test, have a standardized test. Uh, it depends on what grade level they're in, what content level they teach. Um, and so we can't just utilize that that test. Um, and we also know there are several other factors. It, we could have a whole nother session on whether or not the standardized test truly measures students' academic abilities, um, and whether or not they can be successful. And so we also look at growth data, which is really important for us, especially with the mobility that we have. Our teachers don't control where our students are when they walk into that classroom. What they do control is what happens while they are in their care. And so we really try to look at where a student is when they have the opportunity to join that teacher and how far that teacher helps them to grow, moving towards that level of proficiency if they're not there yet.
Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, thank you for for coming tonight. I appreciate it. My my wife is both a uh Ben Davis graduate and a former Wayne Township employee at Maplewood Elementary.
Once a giant, always a giant.
That's right. The uh, uh, two questions, I guess, point of clarification, and you may have already addressed this. But in the section where it talks about reducing the dependency on fossil fuels through uh propane fueled and electric vehicles, was was the electric vehicle, the two buses?
They are.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we, you know, those buses are about four hundred thousand. Yeah, so they're about four hundred thousand dollars apiece right now, which is four times, almost four times what you can get a normal bus. So. We were waiting on a federal grant. We finally got the federal grant so that we could pay the same cost for those two electric buses that we would pay for a a regular bus. So that we could begin to test those out. We've heard stories from other, other districts that have electric buses. Uh, but we wanted to to test them ourselves, just to determine if that's the next direction of our fleet. Um, quite honestly, I think hydrogen fuel is the next.
Oh, my God.
Wave, so.
This guy is a fucking dope, okay? It just reads like the first science magazine article about hydrogen and buses like, oh, you know what? That sounds like a great idea. Hey, that's totally the future. All right, let me tell you what, pal, you're an idiot.
I'm waiting on the hydrogen fuel cells to be, to be put into buses.
Yeah, you know what? They've been saying that for the last half a century, okay? What happened with that? All right, twenty, thirty years ago, they said we're ten years away. It's every ten years. We're so close now.
Yeah, I was just curious if it was something like maintenance or other fleet vehicles.
Let me tell you what, all right, everybody out there, you cannot compete. I have forgotten more than what you know about cars, electric vehicles, hybrids, all the above. I have been doing this research for twenty years. I know more than you. I know more than Butts. And he is a dope when it comes to this kind of uh, to the hydrogen stuff.
No, we, we, we tried a Sprinter van, a electric Sprinter van didn't work out very well for us, um, for the.
Yeah, electric, electric does not work in general.
Between all of our buildings and deliver supplies and materials. So we do not currently have any electric vehicles. Yeah, that was our only test so far.
Okay, uh, second and final question, uh, the, in the professional development, this uh two hour delay schedule for Mondays. How does that work from from a student perspective? Do they still come to school?
They will, they'll just be two hours later. So our, we'll, we'll have a later start, similar to what may happen during a weather event, an inclement weather event, but they will still end at the same time. So that'll be a shortened day for them. Uh, but our teachers will still come on time. One of the things we're working with some of our community partners to provide before school care for some of our families who may not be able to accommodate that. We tried to tie it into a weekend because a little bit easier to make those shifts. We know already of parents who have talked to their employers and their employer said, yeah, we'd love to shift your hours. It actually works out better for us. And so that that parent will go into their work two hours later or spread their time over the course.
No, no.
Conversations are happening as well.
No, you're gonna fuck everything up.
Breakfast, we'll still serve lunch to those students, still transport our students the same way we would otherwise. Uh, it will just be two hours later.
Okay.
That is gonna be an an absolute, that is gonna turn into a colossal failure. Uh, I will tell you that right now.
When that uh two hour delay on Mondays, um, is is there uh central Indiana precedent uh happening right now already or are you guys setting that precedent?
Um, we used to do a two hour delay at Ben Davis High School. So as the. As the requirements change at the Department of Education, so do we. And we were not able to offer the two hour delay because of a change in seat time requirements that occurred many years ago. Um, that has since changed, and so we are able, and we, and we've also extended our our student attendance day, our student attendance time. So our students will get those full hours and we also have a hundred and eighty-two scheduled days and and the state requires a hundred and eighty. So we're, we're pretty fortunate to have that additional time as well in our schedule. We're not aware of anybody, we really have not collaborated with anybody, so I'm not aware of anybody that does a two hour delay every Monday. We also chose Mondays because that's the least frequently attended day of any of the five days in in a school year. Because we have more holidays on a Monday than 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 any other a day of the week. So we knew that that would be a a day that is less intrusive than any other day in the week. You'll notice our professional development days are never on a Monday or Friday. Um, that just lends itself to three day weekends for staff. So they'll always be in the middle of the week.
Well, Doctor.
I would love to hear how how that works out. Um, as a former principal.
Yeah.
We had an early dismissal on Wednesdays for for professional development for all staff across the district and and that worked very well in another school district in another state. Um, and so we would love to hear a year from now.
Yeah, we'd love to come back.
How that works out.
Oh, I can't wait.
Too, and then one of the things that I think is always a challenge with professional development is is it being utilized effectively and and with fidelity? And so we've been very intentional to identify what type of professional development happens on what types of days. Some of it will be building based, some will be district based, some of it may be content. Uh, some of it may be built around certain, you know, certain tasks that we're trying to complete. And so we're very intentional as to identifying what those days will look like so that they are consistent across the district and they're not interdependent upon a particular building.
Well, I think that's uh, that's it for the questions from the, from my colleagues on the committee. And Doctor, I just want to say thank you once again for sharing uh some of the stories and some of the great things that are.
Well, as you can tell, I've I've got an amazing team surrounding me and and I just.
Very not cheap at all.
One of the more thorough presentations, so certainly appreciate that, uh, providing us with that information. As I mentioned.
Appreciate the opportunity.
Information gathering phase of 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 the work that we're trying to accomplish in our city. Um, what you've contributed tonight will be very.
Oh, look, Fiona McCormick's sippy cup matches her, her clown outfit.
So I think that's it for tonight.
Oh, wonderful. So you got a three hundred thousand dollar superintendent, you have a lot of children in there that don't know how to speak the native language. Uh, or English, anyway, English, and you got a bunch of uh kids who don't know how to read and write. What could go wrong? Hi, everybody. All right, until next time.